I don't know if you can hear me.
Attention.
Can you hear me?
Zero, please.
Voices of zero.
Good evening, everyone. It's good to have you all here. In fact, I think this is probably one of the largest groups I've ever seen here. This is great. Welcome this evening to USD 305 School Board. Today is February 12th, 2019. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First thing on our agenda is approval of the agenda. Are there additions or corrections?
Madam President, there are no additions or corrections.
Thank you. Can I have a motion to approve the agenda?
I move we approve the agenda as printed.
Second, Jim. Thank you. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carried, seven zero. Next on our agenda is reason why all of you are here, recognitions and presentations with Jennifer Bradford Vernon, and first is You Do Make a Difference Awards.
Good evening. The You Make a Difference Award is presented to staff members whose exemplary actions support students, colleagues, and the mission of Salina Public Schools. Recipients of these awards receive a lapel pin and a handwritten note personally delivered by a Board of Education member. Shauna Vacaday-Wataboo, kindergarten teacher at Oakdale Elementary School. Shauna's teaching style prompted a parent to nominate her to receive this recognition. Some of Shauna's qualities that positively affect everyone include her hard work, wonderful communication skills, and her warm and open heart. Her extra efforts included providing gifts to families in need at the holidays and attending school and student activities outside of the workday. Thank you, Shauna, for making a difference at Oakdale. Kathy Cash, music teacher at Husner Elementary School. Kathy brought an exciting idea to Husner, High Five Fridays. Her vision involves community members high-fiving students as they enter on Friday mornings as acknowledgement of students' hard work, pride, and grit. Participants have included Kansas State Polytechnic, the USD 305 Board Office and Board members, and the Salina Police Department. Kathy's initiative and coordination have made a difference at Husner. Thank you.
Sarah Goldsby, first grade teacher, Mackenzie Weishaar, second grade teacher, and Linda Rohr, music teacher at Sunset Elementary School. Sarah, Mackenzie, and Linda formed a committee to run a community project for Sunset students named Give Sember. The Sunset family brought gloves, mittens, and hats that were used at Sunset and shared with other community agencies. Students proudly watched as the collection of items grew to a final number of 234 donations. Thank you, Sarah, Mackenzie, and Linda, for making a difference at Sunset.
Next on our agenda is the KASB Boardsmanship Awards. And would Emma, and Gabe, and Ann, and Jim, and Gary come down front, and Dr. Hardy, too?
Or not.
This evening, we recognize district leadership for participation in Kansas Association of School Boards seminars and continuing education. Honor Roll Level Two Certificates of Recognition were earned by Dr. Hardy, Superintendent, Nedra Albel, Board President, Gary Denning, Board Member, Jim Fletcher, Board Member, Gabe Grant, Board Member, Ann Zimmerman, Board Member, Emma Doherty, Board Member, receives a Level One Certificate. And we do thank all of you for your continued dedication and time commitment on behalf of the students and staff at USD 305. Thank you. Next, we will begin our Superintendent Excellence Awards. And this evening, our first group of awards goes to Choir State Qualifiers at South High School. Eddie Creer Jr. is the Vocal Music Director. If you will please come to the front, along with all of his music students. And this evening, students, as your name is called, please receive your award from Dr. Hardy. And then, parents, if you would like to take a photo, if you would stand, we'll be happy to pause for you to be able to do that. Congratulations to the following students who were selected to the Kansas Music Educators Association All-State Choir. Amaya Dungin, Jr., second year. Jessica Greer, Senior. Whitney Turner, Jr. Courtney White, Jr., second year. Would you please allow the Board of Education to congratulate you now?
Congratulations. That's great. Congratulations. Congratulations. Thanks for all your congratulations.
Thank you, Eddie.
Our next group of awards goes to Choir State Qualifiers at Central High School. Ryan Holmquist is the Vocal Music Director. And will all the music students please line up next to Dr. Hardy and their sponsor at Congratulations to the following students who were selected to the Kansas Music Educators Association 2019 All-State Mixed Choir. They will perform at the KMEA Convention at Wichita's Century Two Concert Hall on February 23rd. Allstate Mixed Choir, Carly Redding, Senior. Nate Weiss, Jr. Lance Griffin, Jr. And the following made it into the newest state choir, the Allstate Women's Choir. They will perform at the KMEA Convention at Wichita's Century Two Concert Hall on February 23rd. Allstate Women's Choir, Violet Arb, Jr. Ella Eaton, Jr. Indigo Geis, Senior. Brayden Holtberg, Senior. Brayden is the second Central student in school history to make it all three years and will receive her three-year medal at the State Choir Concert. Would you please allow the Board of Education to congratulate you now?
Congratulations. That's great. Congratulations. Congratulations. What a wonderful honor. Great job, you guys. We're so proud of that job. Well done. Thanks for all you do. Really proud of you. Oh, thank you. Thanks for all you do.
Indigo, is that right? Thank you for all the work.
Now, we recognize Band State Qualifiers at Central High School. Ben Rohr is the Central High Band Director, and he has brought his band students Tyler and Jose. Centrals two Allstate Jazz Band members will go to Wichita on February 21 to rehearse, with their performance being on February 23rd. The Allstate Jazz Band members, Tyler Corle, Jr., trombone. Jose Arieta-Renteria, Jr., bass trombone. Would you please allow the Board of Education to congratulate you now?
Congratulations. Enjoy that experience. Thanks for all you do. Appreciate you. Thanks so much.
Our next group of awards goes to Orchestra State Qualifiers at South High School. And we now invite Alyssa Lane, South High Orchestra Director, and her student Maria Bonilla to the front. South High had one orchestra student selected out of 120 violins in the state to participate in the KMEA Allstate Orchestra, February 21 to 23 during the KMEA Convention. Congratulations to Maria Bonilla, Jr., second-year Allstate Violin. Please allow the Board of Education to congratulate you.
Congratulations. That's tremendous. Thanks for all you do.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Beautiful instrument.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Our next group of awards goes to Debate State Qualifiers at South High School. The South High Debate Team is coached by Megan Hagaman. And will all of her debate students please line up next to Dr. Hardy and her at this The following students were novice state debaters. Novice State is a tournament that mirrors the qualification process for varsity state but is reserved for first-year competitors. Jaden McLaughlin, freshman. Ariana Nunez, freshman. Jaden and Ariana placed 11th out of 100 teams. Ariana also placed sixth at state in the four-speaker state debate. Seth Carter, freshman. Seth also placed sixth at state in the four-speaker state debate. Emily Jordan, sophomore. Abigail Thompson, sophomore. Mason Jones, freshman. Ryland Humphrey, freshman. Madison Wilson-Snook, freshman. Four-speaker state debate. Gavin Jones, Jr. Tiana Marion, sophomore. Maya Daly, sophomore. Santiago Vasquez, Jr. Two-speaker state debate. Brandon Stewart, Jr., finished in eighth place. Savannah Bonilla, Jr., finished in eighth place. Courtney McCullough, sophomore. Caitlin Bergman, sophomore. Tristan Kinderneck, Jr. Maddie Turner, sophomore. Miriam Benavides, sophomore. Eileen Escobedo, sophomore. Please allow the Board of Education to congratulate you now.
Congratulations. 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 Great job. Really well done. Great job. Proud of you. Congratulations. Wonderful job. Congratulations. Wonderful job, you guys. Congratulations. Really appreciate all your hard work. Congratulations. Congratulations. Well done. Thanks for all that.
Central High School Art Teachers with honorees are Larry Cullen, Kirsten Dykes, and Sarah Crata. Will their art students please join their teachers in the front at this time? Thirteenth Salina High School Central Art Students with 16 pieces of artwork were honored at the prestigious 2019 Kansas Regional Scholastic Art Awards exhibit. This exhibit opened February 1 and closes with a reception for the student artists and their families on March 23rd. The following students received silver keys. Amaya Svenblad, Jr. Amaya received a silver key on her watercolor painting titled "Lock" and an honorable mention on her self-portrait oil painting. Lauren Cullen, Sr., who received a silver key on her large watercolor painting titled "Dead Leaf." Grace Holgersen, Sr., received a silver key on her mixed media drawing titled "The Business Trip." Logan Roush, Sr., received a silver key on his cardboard sculpture titled "Tar." Kira Williams, Jr., received a silver key on her ink drawing titled "Street Point of View." Chloe White, sophomore. Rebecca Franklin, sophomore. Paige McConnell, sophomore. Morgan Berryman, freshman. All received a silver key on their collaborative tree branch sculpture titled "Jacque the Melissa Chavez, freshman. Connor Dornkamp, Jr. Mackenzie Holsy, Jr. All received a silver key on their collaborative tree branch sculpture titled "Tribal Rectangle." Lena Kenyard, freshman, received a silver key on her ink drawing titled "Santa Fe Home." The following art students also were presented with honorable mentions. Raymond Madera, Sr., with three honorable mentions. Grace Hopkins, Sr. Katie Buchanan, Jr. Jessalyn Colburn, Jr. Aleah Holler, Jr. Would you please allow the Board of Education to congratulate you?
Congratulations. That's great. Congratulations. Congratulations. Good job. Congratulations. Keep it up. Congratulations. I so appreciate the kind of work that you do. Talent. Wonderful. Wonderful job, you guys. Thanks for all you do. Thank you. Thank you. Good job. Take care.
Our next group of awards goes to Theater State Qualifiers at South High School. Kate Lindsay is the South High Theater Director. Please join Dr. Hardy and your students in the front. At the Kansas Thespian Festival, Salina Souths, Thespian Troop received a Gold Honor Troop Award for successfully completing criteria including community service activities, fundraisers, touring productions, and other activities. Drama Club Officers, Kaylee Warren, Sr. Leighton Klein, Sr. And Jacob Sweet, Jr. Put together the application book that President Kaylee Warren presented, Kaylee and Whitney The two of them served as state board members helping to organize and run the conference. Courtney White, Jr., was an alternate. And a little more information, Whitney Turner was a cast member in a production that will perform at the International Thespian Festival. And Troop Director Kate Lindsay received the Region Five Teacher of the Year Award. Please allow the Board of Education to congratulate you now.
Congratulations. Congratulations. Great. Congratulations. Wonderful tradition you guys kept doing. Great job. Great job. Congratulations. Proud of you. Thanks for all you do. Congratulations. Wonderful. Well done.
Our last group of awards this evening goes to Theater State Qualifiers at Central High School. Chad Newlick is the Central High Theater Director. And will Mr. Newlick and all of his theater students please line up next to Dr. Hardy? Gold Honor Troop Award, Audrey Burgoon, Sr. Audrey was awarded one of two Future Theater Educator Scholarships, as well as finished her term as the Student State Officer Chair. She is also currently serving as an International Thespian Officer, one of six nationwide. Annie Taggart, Sr. Brayden Holtberg, Sr. Madeline Parody, Jr. Carly Redding, Sr. Rebecca Hoff, Sr. Phoebe Helton, Sr. Spencer Angel, sophomore. Spencer was elected as the Student State Vice Chair, where he will serve a two-year term representing all of the state. Mosae Brown, Jr. Mosae had a big role in the all-state production that will be performed at the International Thespian Festival this summer. Would you please allow the Board of Education to congratulate you now?
Congratulations. Okay, that's okay. Congratulations. Congratulations. Great job. Congratulations. Well done. So proud of everything you all do. Great job. Chad, thank you so much. Isn't that amazing? Thank you for all the time. Thank you. Good job. Thank you, sir. Chad?
Isn't that wonderful? It is. Accomplishing me so much, my goodness. I felt...
Our next item on the... By the way, this is a wonderful, wonderful thing. Twenty-five minutes of congratulating students. What more could you ask for? Next on our agenda is approval of consent agenda items, which include minutes of the January 8, 2019 Regular Meeting, and minutes of special meetings for January 10, January 14, January 15, January 16, January 17, January 18, and January 22, 2019. Personnel report, financial reports, which includes the January bills list, December Treasurers Report, December Investment Report, December Journal entries, bond budget summary for January, and approved audit of contract with Varney and Associates CPAs LLC for year end June 30, 2019 in the amount of $21,300. Madam President? Yes. I move we accept the consent agenda items. Is there a second?
Emma Doherty, second.
Is there any discussion, questions? All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carried, seven zero. Right now, it's time for public forum. If there's anyone in the audience that would like to come forward, you certainly may do so at this time. Please state your name right over here. And I'm going to read something for you real quick before you speak. Do you have the guidelines for the public forum? Did you pick those up at all? Okay, we'll get those to you. Public forum is a non-action item on the agenda. The Board appreciates patrons taking time to share with us about their thoughts and concerns. This is not an appropriate time or place for patrons to make comments of a personal nature about any district employee or student. Persons making comments which violate the privacy rights of district employees and students will be asked to stop speaking or cease their remarks. If a patron or parent has a concern with one or more employees, the Board will refer that person to the appropriate supervisor or to the superintendent for further review. And would you state your name and your address, please?
Brian Frazier, Salina, Kansas, 512 South 8th Street. I am also the president of the Salina NAACP. The reason why I'm here today is to find out some information on the Equity Council, how it is doing, how it's progressing. A year, over a year after, an issue came up in the pylon. I would like to know that the committee that was formed is actually working on those issues that affect the students and faculty and staff of our schools. That those people are able to look at the problems and the issues that are within our USD 305 school district, be able to resolve those issues, or at least be able to have an open discussion in a safe and respectful environment to where we can get past, or not necessarily get past, but at least peel the scabs off of some of those wounds that are there, that are deep wounds. And I would just like to know how our Equity Council is doing, if the folks on that council feel as if they are being led in the right direction to where they can work on those problems that are arising, and try to at least get some kind of resolution or comfort to some of those folks that are hurting.
Okay. Thank you for your comment. And I would direct you to see Dr. Hardy, contact Dr. Hardy in that regard. We do not have that on the agenda this evening.
Has the school board been updated? I'm sorry.
Madam President, if I could address, Mr. Frazier is one of the awesome people that was a part of our steering committee.
Okay, great.
So we very appreciate his efforts. The next meeting is this Thursday at 5:30 if you'd like to attend. And in between, I can catch up to you on how our progress is.
All right. I appreciate that. And also, has the school board been updating on what the progress of that committee is doing?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Dr. Hardy, that meeting is next week on Thursday, the 21st.
I'm sorry, Brian. I'm sorry, I told you, it's not this Thursday, next Thursday, the 21st at 5:30.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Rektor.
Thank you again.
And also, has the School Board been updating on what the progress of that committee is doing?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Dr. Hardy, that meeting is next week on Thursday, the 21st.
I'm sorry, I told you, it's not this Thursday, next Thursday, the 21st at 5:30.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Rector.
Thank you again. Next on our agenda is Action Agenda, Central High Robotics Out-of-State Field Trip with Sheila Schaefer. Go ahead.
What would you like to know?
Usually, there's just a little bit of a presentation.
Oh, okay. Well, the First Robotics Team 3172 will travel to Denver, Colorado, to compete in the Denver Competition, March 20th through the 24th.
Okay, I think you have down the total cost of competition is $6,210?
Yes.
And I think it's all there in front of you. Are there any questions or comments?
Is this the first time Central has gone to this particular tournament?
No, this will be the second time.
The second time?
Anyone else? Do I have a motion? Gary?
Madam President, I move that we approve the Central High Robotics Out-of-State Trip to Denver, Colorado on March 20th through 24th, 2019, as presented.
Second, Jim? You have a motion and a second? Time for any more questions, comments? Have fun too. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries, seven zero. Moving on to our next Action Agenda Item is the 2019-2020 School Calendar with Dr. Hardy.
Yes, Madam President. We had a full room, as we did, our Calendar Committee met. We had a good representation from all different parts of our district and levels, including Board Member Emma and myself, and Executive Director Shannon Rector. And we went through the proposed calendar for 1920, had good discussions, got a good review, lots of good input, I felt like. And finally, when we got done, this was the consensus calendar that we felt was appropriate for next year, considering the parameters that we worked within as far as having our school year. So with that in mind, it is recommended that you approve the 2019-20 School Calendar as presented.
Any questions or comments?
I'd just like to comment on vacation time. I heard on television today that the Wichita Schools have changed their school calendar for the third time in recent weeks, and that's because of some upset, apparently, with the times that the colleges are having their spring breaks. So, from what I was able to see online, it looks like our spring break will coincide with K-State's and KU's for one year, and then only K-State's for the next year, because KU is going to be out of sync. I hate to say that. That's, I think, what I read. So whether they'll change or not, I don't know. But it was really kind of interesting that Fort Hays State and Emporia and some of the other ones, all of the other ones, were going to be doing their spring break at one time, and the two larger schools were not, and then K-State got into it.
It started with the Board of Regents will not allow for the week that we typically have it is because they have their meetings, and so they have asked the universities to not hold it. So they're either holding it before or the week after. So that's what's causing the issue.
Okay, so there's only one that seems not to be online.
It's a moving target.
Apparently so.
The Regents did not help us out when they gave the Regent Institutions the privilege to choose what week they want to have their spring break.
Okay, so we do not expect to get parent complaints, then?
Never. But we know for next year, we're good for K-State and KU, and that seems to be the
The major?
The major ones. And it'll be interesting to see the year after that if the other universities come around and try and organize a little bit better.
Okay, thank you.
Do I have a motion?
Madam President, Madam Doherty, I make a motion, we accept the 2019-2020 School Calendar as presented.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries, seven zero. And Dr. Hardy is next also with a tentative 2020-2021 School Calendar.
Yes, Madam President, that's hard to say. 2020-2021, that's going to be difficult. Again, the Calendar Committee, the same Calendar Committee, the same day, we reviewed the tentative School Calendar, recognizing that this is not the final one, but it gives us some ways to plan for two-year planning purposes. So the committee looked at this again and came up with a consensus for the 2020-2021 School Calendar year, tentatively, this will meet our needs.
Any discussion on this one? Motion? Gary?
I move we approve the tentative calendar for 2020-2021 School Year as presented.
Second? And? All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries, seven zero. Thank you. We have nothing in Discussion Agenda, so moving on to School Board Reports and Upcoming Dates of Importance. Saturday, February 23rd is Chamber Legislative Meeting at the Chamber Office at 8:30 a.m. Saturday, March 16th, Chamber Legislative Meeting in the Chamber at 8:30 a.m. Tuesday, April 9th, Salina Education Foundation Reception at 4:30. So come a little early that evening. Saturday, April 20th, Chamber Legislative Meeting at the Chamber at 8:30 a.m. And I will start with Gary.
I attended the both school musicals at Central and South. I just hope, for those maybe who are going to watch this on TV, that people realize what juggernauts we have in our theater departments right now, together with the music and all that, the instrumental music and the singing. It is just incredible, the talent that both schools can put out there, and the quality, the programming, and all the other things that the students do to make that work like a business. It's amazing, and I enjoyed both shows. And then I delivered a You Make a Difference Awards at Oakdale today. Had a great time with kindergarteners getting to give their teacher a hug for going above and beyond her regular duties. That was just great.
Good, thank you. Jim?
Right along with Gary, it's such a busy time of year. Got to go to both of the plays at South and Central. You Make a Difference Awards at Sunset, and several basketball games around the area, including the South-Central game. And just one thing that stuck out to me one evening, I've got a daughter who is an eighth grader, will be a freshman at South next year. And we rushed home to eat dinner so that we could go to the meeting to hear about the freshman year, and we finished with our meeting, and we were walking her through the school, and there was a basketball game going on. And I said, well, let's sit down and watch the basketball game. And there was play practice going on. And I looked around and I saw our principals both there, our ADs there, many of our teachers there, and I sat back and remembered that most of them got there at 7:30 that morning. And it was about 10 o'clock, I think, when we finally left that day. And I think that goes on probably two to three days a week, at least, at the school.
Jim, they got to get there at 7, not 7:00.
Yeah, well, that's, yeah. So, just a little, it's very busy, and I just want to make sure that they know, me for sure, I appreciate all the efforts that go into this time of year for our students and schools to keep all those things going and make everything happen.
Thank you, Jim. Anne?
I attended the Smoke Hill Education Service Center Meeting last Thursday. I haven't thought of anything of note to add to that, but I did attend also the High School Musical at Central and All Shook Up at South, and it was great. I did represent the School Board at High Five Friday at Husner. I didn't get there in time to get my, to put on my hashtag Y305 t-shirt, but, and I didn't really know what I was in for, because all we had been told was they wanted the School Board there to greet the students, and I thought, what a silly thing. They don't know who we are, and why would they care? And, but I had to go down the gauntlet of the whole district office, giving high fives to everybody to get to my spot in line, and it's pretty impressive. It's kind of a focus you have to do to get all those fives going. And then all the kids came through, and it was really great fun. So I guess that was Sandy Cash's, the music teacher's idea, and it was a great one. I think that's, oh, thank you.
Gabe?
I was unable to attend our Parks Board Meeting in January, and our CKCIE Board of Control Meeting was canceled for January, so we'll have a February 1 here coming up. Made it to lots of musicals and basketball and all sorts of other activities, but nothing else to report.
Okay, thank you. Emma?
I went to the District Health Council and was very impressed with all the things that are going on for exercise for the students and the wristbands to monitor their heart rates and the importance of exercising. They also discussed that at Central High, they have some tools on guiding health plates and healthy plates and food labels and this type of thing. There's going to be a baking boot camp at South High this summer, and 20 employees will be invited, 10 from the Salina USD 305, and then the rest will be from the surrounding counties, which I thought was very nice. The culinary person will be coming from Johnson County. Also, they held a taste test, high school students, and for next year for food that they want changed or want something different. Under Allied Health at Central High, they have certifications in fire and police science, and that's at the 11th grade level, which is nice. And then also shared the concern of Jules, J-U-U-L-S, the chemical loaded with nicotine for smoking for students. So it was an interesting District Health Council Meeting. Also attended the Kansas Day Celebration with students, where they learned to shell corn, grind corn up, and make butter, and also about mercantile pricing that had gone on in the early days, and also then a tour of the one-room house. And so that was very educational and nice. Attended the graduation at Salina West, and then also attended the Performing Arts, the All Shook Up School Program, which was very impressive. And I think there was standing room only at both schools, so that was very impressive. That's all.
Thank you. Carol?
Yeah, just commenting on the Jules situation, I assume most everyone got a look at the article in Today's Journal on the first page about vaping, but I thought the headline was extremely misleading.
Yes.
Wes, yes.
Because what it suggested was that vaping actually diminished student smoking, cuts back on student smoking. So whoever wrote that headline, I think, made a real mistake, and is sending out a message that was not then supported by the article itself, but you had to read into the article to find out what that really meant. So the concern clearly is that vaping will lead to more smoking rather than less, and we need to be aware of all of that. I have received no response, but I wrote Samantha Bee on Twitter. I watch Samantha Bee, I'm sorry to say, but she's allowing Jules to advertise on her program, and I did not think that was a good idea, so. Whether, yeah. That was where I'd seen advertising for Jules. And of course, the idea is, oh, we do not sell or promote our product to underage people. Okay, we all know the story on that. Anyway, Husner, to deliver Kathy Cash's You Make a Difference Awards for High Five Fridays, obviously a very great occasion for kids and for staff alike. And then the other thing that I did was go to a meeting with NEA Salina. I'm going to call them officers, representatives is probably a better term. The most important thing out of that was that middle school principals, Bonnie Welty and Dustin Dooley, presented a schedule for next year, which will include more planned time for staff. You may recall that the high schools and the elementary schools, those staff members were given more time this year, but it took a while for that middle school schedule to be worked out. But apparently, it has been approved pretty much by staff, 92% approval rating, which is good. And of course, with both schools on the same schedule, sharing staff will be much easier. Teachers also brought up busing issues, and it was agreed that teachers who stay beyond the duty day to wait for buses will keep a time log, so we'll see how long, how much time is actually being spent, that sort of thing. And then there were questions about filling the superintendent's position and the transition process that will occur this spring. Everybody's curious, and we did the best we could to answer questions. So it was a productive meeting, always is, I think. Appreciate it. That's it.
Thank you. I also went to Salina West for graduation and met with the Equity Council, and we're moving along and looking forward to visiting about the student questionnaire input. We did the staff questionnaire input, looked at that, and pulled out what things were highlighted there and made a list of those, and then this next meeting, we are looking at students' input. And with that, otherwise, I spent three weeks on antibiotics and in bed. And I am back, I'm me again, so I'm ready to go. Superintendent Report?
Yes, Madam President. This is National Career and Technical Education Month, and at your place, you should have a sheet that lists our career clusters. One of the things I think is very significant about this, this is, not very many school districts can offer these many things to our students. This is pretty phenomenal. Sometimes school districts will call that they have a career cluster or a pathway, and it's not much depth. So what we have to offer our students is pretty phenomenal. So in lieu of it being National Career and Technical Education Month, I thought you would appreciate seeing what we have. If you would like to see more, we also have, Lynn, would you address that a little bit?
In the High School Enrollment Guide, we have gone through and aligned all of our classes that are supportive of each individual career cluster, so that as kids are doing their career and life planning class at the middle school, and they're identifying an area for their individual plan of study that's of interest to them, they can look in that enrollment guide, and if their interest, if that interest inventory comes back, that manufacturing is a strong match for the child, then they can see, here are all the courses that we would offer that are CTE-based, that would be manufacturing, and there would be two different pathways that would match that. And then here are all of the other electives that we would have that would be supportive of careers in this area. So every single course that we have is listed in that fashion to try to support parents and kids as they're talking about what classes that they should be taking. We have so many courses that it can be overwhelming to look at the book as a whole, and that's a way to just provide some focus. Students, of course, can enroll in any class that they wish to enroll in, but it's just a way for them to see what would be really targeted, maybe to their interests or aptitudes. So you can certainly contact me if you'd like to see a copy of those pages, because that's something that we've recently added that I think has been really helpful for teachers too, as they're having conversations with our students.
Thank you, Lynn. It's really impressive what we have to offer our students, and I think part of it is that we're pretty blessed when you consider that our bond project allowed us to expand what we're doing and make what we're doing even better. You know, when you go through our, like Salina South, and you go by there and you see the culinary lab, and it looks great and it looks beautiful, and it is used, it's really popular. The other thing I would point out, and this is the true end in mind of our effort, is that all these classes and the pathways and the career clusters, they transfer to jobs, future employment, what students want to do for post-secondary, and that's really the end in mind. So we're pretty blessed in that way. The legislature's still in session. As usual, they kind of do a lot of mess, I hate to say messing around, but they're not very on task, I would say. So there's, the superintendents get a lot of emails telling us of potential legislation that's coming through, or bills that have been assigned, and I've kind of seen a pattern. Everybody gets all kind of worked up about it. We send in testimony, or we contact our legislators. By the way, our legislators are great. I tweet to them, and they tweet, not tweet, we do texting back and forth, and they really stay connected, so I appreciate that. Sometimes they will call me to ask for further information, which I appreciate. So what we're hearing is that there's a lot of, it's politics, that there's a bill being thrown out to see if it'll stick, or a bill being thrown out to see how many amendments will be added to it. will be added to it. Lots of times, those are just testing the waters with the idea they may not make it out of committee. And we'll get to the point where there's a turnaround date in the legislature where all bills have to be signed. But I think the thing that I appreciate, at the superintendent council recently, one of the legislators, a real respected person, Republican House member, came and spoke to all superintendents, and he answered our questions, and then he said, be patient. Those were his words. He said he's been doing this for a little while, be patient. He said there's a lot of forces at work behind the scenes that he think are real supportive of education, but they're waiting for the right time to come forward to help us out. So I thought that was very interesting that he said be patient when we're not very good at being patient. The next thing I just want to point out is that this afternoon, I went to a vent, and we are so fortunate, the United Way Salina is a, is a force in our community. You know, they do the back-to-school event that we have at Lakewood with all the backpacks and all those things. And today, they had an event where they put out a call for 200 volunteers to come to the Hilton Garden Inn, and folks showed up and they put together hygiene bags for students. And there were so many people showed up, they thought it would take two hours, and they got it done in an hour. But just to look at that group and see the cross-section of Salina, all different walks of life, people from businesses, retired folks, just all came to help, and they did it as a call to help our students. So each of our schools will be recipients of these bags that were put together. A lot of it, most of it, I would say, was donated. There were some of our businesses here in town that put up a lot to help support that effort. But it was exciting to see it. It was very, very well organized, very impressive, and it's just another affirmation about how we are a school district that has great community partners and great support from our community. So I just wanted to lift that up, that our United Way does amazing things, and of course, you know it, but I thought this is one that you might not have heard. Madam President, that's all I have.
Thank you. Next on our agenda is an executive session for personnel, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
How many minutes do you think?
How about if we start with 20?
20? Okay, I need a motion for 20 minutes. Ann? Personnel, you said?
Yes.
I move that the Board of Education go into executive session at 6 o'clock, is that?
That sounds right.
For 20 minutes, for the purpose of discussing personnel matters of non-elected personnel and their contractual obligations, because if this matter were discussed in open session, it might invade the privacy of those discussed, and that the Board of Education reconvene into open session at 6:20 in the Board Conference Room. I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries, seven zero. So we will adjourn into executive session at 6, and we will open that up at 20 after 6. Thank you all for coming, and if you'd like to stay, you certainly can stay in this room.